India or the number one broker on Alais Blue on your demand and trading account in case start by any way, 3000 rupees Madhipola voucher free up here.
Whatever is the deliberations and the views, ideas, recommendations and caution that we place before the decision makers, we feel that it will be of use in formulating the future policies. Now that the basically the issue today is that the MHA Ministry of Foreign Affairs has said April 20th, there will be some relaxations subject to certain conditions and we have seen, we have seen, we have seen among our people that in fact, Mr. Ragavan as a police officer would certify would bear me to this because as a journalist I have seen this, I watched this unless there is the danda, unless there is enforcement, unless there is punishment, our people are not used to following rules. The moment you relax something like almost like what happened in 2015 when you know the Porur Lake, a small breach and it inundated the entire city. So how do we kind of balance between this relaxation of essential services, MSMEs and to kind of spur the economy to some extent, livelihood to some extent, particularly the marginalized people. Now the balancing between life and livelihood, what should the government do? Mr. Sivaraman, if you were in the seat, what would you do? How far would you go?
Actually, as I have already mentioned and recently it was mentioned by Mr. Ragavan also, I had given the suggestion to slowly liberalize the movement of people, particularly in the areas case. And that's how it has happened about 335 districts have been isolated where there has not been a single COVID case. Apart from this, many of the people who have been earning their daily bread by offering their services like electricians, plumbers, carpenters, they should be allowed to move because they are servicemen and their services are essential in the various household. That has also been done by the government. Now, as a follow-up of this, we do not know who is a plumber who is an electrician. So in future, to regulate this, each one of these people who provide domestic services should be licensed and should carry a proper identity card. The government should have a means of registering them, saying that this is an authorized person, he is not a person with a criminal background or at least he is not in the police records. So these are the people. So this is one step forward coming to think of the future when you have to liberalize the movement of such people. God forbid in any other epidemic or pandemic or any other emergency, these people will have their licenses and they should be able to go and enter a house safely that they are authorized representatives. This could be one of the very interesting.
Mr. Sivaraman?
Yes.
Sir, Mr. Sivaraman, sir, I want to interrupt here just with one, one doubt that I have. When you're talking of electricians, yes, they are very essentials. In fact, in my house too, we need did one yesterday, there was a calamity or rather an emergency. Now you have seen even Times of India carried a story today, how the pizza boy, a pizza boy in Delhi, he tested positive and all the houses he had visited are now on in self quarantine. So similarly, these electricians and plumbers, yes, they will carry a government ID. I think along with that suggestion, because this is an essential service, we will really get locked up at home. The government should along with the ID should also make it mandatory that these people must be, you know, screened once a week or something like that.
Exactly, exactly. In case of such an emergency, before they are allowed to move liberally in the society, they should have the certificate that they have been screened and proved to be without any infection. Otherwise, in a pandemic situation, it will be a dangerous thing to allow these people to move simply because they have got an identity card. Therefore, there has to be screen, that's a precondition before they are allowed to move into the systems or in the society where they have to offer their services. Now, as far as the MSME sector is concerned, I had already mentioned in the Government of India, immediately as he said, I sent the suggestion that they must be given a three-month moratorium completely. I also gave a suggestion that during this three-month period, no interest should be charged on the loan and that interest should be paid by the government as a grant. I understand there is some kind of a subsidy, but it should have been totally interest-free. Interest falling due for this three-month period when there was a lockdown, they could not have earned anything. I mean, in the future, if they earn anything, that will not be sufficient to pay the interest. Therefore, there should have been a complete stopping of the payment of interest and Government of India should have subsidized it. That I don't think has happened and I am sure that should happen and in my view, that will give a very big relief to the MSME sector to start their industries as soon as the lockdown is open. So this is a very important issue. One futuristic suggestion which I'm going to make. Now, India doesn't have a proper unemployment insurance key. So in my opinion, as a lesson from this, which I was contemplating to state in some other seminar, in any case, we are here, I'm sitting there, that every organization which employs more than 10 people should be allowed to insure with somebody for an unemployment insurance key. There should be an equal contribution from the employer and the employee to some extent, or probably even the government can also contribute if it is an MSME sector so that there is a fund which we can, in economic terms, we used to call it a wage fund, which is out of the wage fund wages are being paid. Whereas here, in an employment insurance, if it is properly done and created, there are any number of insurance agencies may come forward. Then in a time of this, this kind of a situation, it can be used and people need not stop, they need not depend on government funding to go to these people. This is a second important suggestion which I want to make. The third follow-up which I want to say is important that is political. So far, I'm not saying I'm making a political statement. In the last six years or six and a half years, this present government almost did kept aside the opposition leaders, the opposition parties and the chief ministers also. If you remember right, if anyone of you have seen the volume containing Prime Minister Jawaharlal Naru's letters to the chief ministers, every month Jawaharlal Naru used to write a letter to the chief minister. My dear chief minister, this has been happening on the international front, this is on the domestic front, the Government of India level, whether you have anything to say on this matter. This, I've got two volumes of those books with me. Now, for the first time, Mr. Modi decided to consult the chief minister. It's a very good beginning, this should be carried on for once in at least once in six months, Mr. Modi should be in a position to consult the chief ministers on all important events in the country, on all important things which he want to get through the parliament, he should take the opinion. This is a very good opening he has made. Similarly, in regard to the meeting with the opposition, probably are opening up a very good window tomorrow to solve some of our international disputes also. If for instance, if you are going to negotiate with the Chinese on the international border, if you are going to have a matter of give and take, he could consult all the opposite leaders, take them into confidence and negotiate with the Chinese and settle that matter once for all. Similarly, there are many, many important legislation which can come into existence and all those things, if he cares only to consult the opposition and the chief ministers, it will be smooth patches through the parliament. I don't know how much of which opposition will cooperate, how much the chief minister, but nothing is lost if the prime minister starts this initiative which he has started now and carries it on to the next four years of his tenure here. These are some of the important matters and apart from that, I want to say something about medical side also. India has been criticized very strongly that we have been spending almost less than 1% of GDP on government-sponsored medical school. There was a Srinath Reddy Commission report on this wherein he wanted to nationalize the entire health program whereas it is not possible considering the present constitutional status where the health is a subject of the state governments. Even now, if you see, most of the work is being done when the state government, the central government is only assisting them. So but this is in a hodgepodge way it is being done. Somebody is asking for some money, he's given some money, somebody else is asking for something else, he's given something else. Therefore, the Government of India should, given the concern to the constitution, have a formal national health planning to be done as to what is to happen, whether these things can be coordinated with the state governments properly or whether the health can also become a concurrent subject. Today, health is a concurrent subject only as far as medical education is concerned. Whether health itself can come under this central government along with the state government, I don't know, I can't say because one has to study it very carefully. But looking to the fact, the rest of the world is spending almost 6% of the GDP on health. Some countries spend even 8%, 10% of the GDP, we have been spending less than 1%. So here is an opportunity for the Government of India and for the state government to sit together, how to hike up the expenditure on health up to 6% in the next four to five years and how to manage the national health grid. We have a health grid, we have sub-health centers, we have primary health centers, we have regional health centers, we have district hospitals, then we have gotten at the national level, state level, big hospitals and specialty hospital. We have a grid. How to extend this grid, how to improve it, how to increase the number of beds, how and these, these things have to be carefully planned and in my view, all the chief ministers and the health minister of Government of India should sit down together and prepare a national health plan so that we are not caught like this in an emergency.
Mr. Sivaraman, there is already criticism, we have seen, we have heard about it many times, that we are spending huge amount of money on our defense whereas you know, critical sectors like education and health do not get that much. How do you know, is it possible to scale down the defense expenditure?
No, it is impossible because even today, India's expenditure on defense is hardly 1.8% of GDP. The norm, even internationally accepted norm is 3% of GDP. We are just spending 1.8% of the GDP on our defense expenditure. I don't think, but there are several other areas where one can sit down and contemplate to cut down the expenditure. Wasteful expenditure is taking place in many areas. Take for example, the MNRA EGA. MNRA EGA is a thing which is touted upon by everybody. Now, I have, I am working in the villages of Tamil Nadu, in many districts I am working. Every month I walk about 15 to 20 kilometers inside the villages. I have seen in one place where MNRA EGA workers were there, they were sitting and simply chatting. Then once they saw my car, they started working, digging some channels. By and large, in developed states, I'm not talking about underdeveloped states like Bihar, Uttar Pradesh or portions of Maharashtra. So the MNRA EGA scheme should be properly focused only into those areas and at times where there is a real need for MNRA EGA, otherwise you're spending over a lack of crores on that without any purpose being achieved with your asset. So these are some of the areas where Government of India can sit down very carefully and easily, I think, you should be able to galvanize 50,000 crores to 60,000 crores. I have been a state finance secretary for several years. 14 budgets are prepared in the Madhipatha State Government. I've been the central government for four years and I'm in the IMA for the several years, seeing the budgets of all the countries. It is not at all difficult for a country to find resources. If anybody says, I can't find resources, I'm not prepared to agree with that at all. As a responsible person who has been in the Finance Ministry of Government of India for several years, I'm saying this.
Thank you, Mr. Sivaraman. Now, Mr. Ganapati as the president of the South India Chamber of Commerce, how do you respond to Mr. Sivaraman's prescription? Is there some areas that need to be added? How do you, how do you react to that?
Yeah, I think let's look at it in multiple spectrums. One is, as Mr. Sivaraman said, yes, money has to be found and money is always there, it's a willingness to find it. On the statement that he made that we need to consult and collaborate, I can't agree with him more. Because some of the ideas come from unknown sources as we all know and recognize. But purely from a business standpoint and perspective, I think a partial lockdown is a great start. A partial lockdown is the way to go and I think that's where we need to do. But also, I think we need to detail out the opening efforts. Let me give you a concern, for example, multiple concerns that I have with this partial lockdown. Take the auto sector for example. Chennai is the Detroit, Tamil Nadu rather is the Detroit of India. Given that, the, all the auto majors are situated outside the city of Chennai and I know of a large number of people who are component suppliers to these auto industries, they are situated in Chennai, they are declared as hotspots and they can't start functioning. Now, you know, an automobile typically consists of something like about 19,000 parts and these have to come and I think the auto manufacturer will be keen to finish those that are in the supply, final line of the assembly so that he can cater to the pent-up demand that is likely to come up after a lockdown like this typically. So I think, you know, if you take an auto sector, for example, I think you'll have to detail out and find out who are those who are stuck in the hotspot but then give them some inputs on how they can begin to work and then get themselves going. I think, you know, the social distancing thing has now become part of our national character. Maybe you know where it was between 10, I've never successfully stood in an airline queue or boarding an aircraft in this country without being pushed by somebody behind or somebody walking backwards or something. Mr. Sivaraman knows in the US, there's a clear gap between two guys in the queue. Now, I think, you know, this, all this is slowly changing in our country thanks to this, you know, with the kind of appeals that have been made by the leadership in this country, the kind of, you know, showcasing that has been done. I think this is a good way to begin and I think it's very easy if you have some messages going in from leaders or personalities and film personalities, which is so important in a state like Tamil Nadu on the message of social distancing and I think you must get the MSMEs going. MSMEs are the lifeline, they do the heavy lifting for jobs and they collapse, I think your job market collapses and once your job market collapses, I think social unrest begins and we need to avoid that at all cost. That should be in the front and center of any decision. The second thing, I said this in a particular context a few days ago, the Indian IT sector needs to be treated with kid gloves. They are the people who are doing the bulk of your revenues from outside, they have a dominant role in positioning India. See, if you, if you see 50% of the IT sector, any case works from home. So the other 50% going to office is happening, delivery for all clients is happening, no IT company, believe you me, is suffering, I mean, in terms of client management. But if you take the BPM sector, which is employing the bulk of the people in this, in that sector, that is where the volumes are being represented, are working because they call for typically low skills at their thing. And these are machine critical delivery that is needed. A guy has to sit in front of a machine, a guy has to work on it and he'll be serving the client at the other end. For example, you know, you take a client like JP, I mean, a company which is servicing JP Morgan Chase. The guy sitting in OMR is actually servicing a client of JP Morgan Chase sitting anywhere in the US or the globe. So it becomes important that he functions from where he is and in a highly competitive industry which BPM is, if you don't deliver regardless of what is happening, you have a problem where the client will decide that, okay, I don't want you, I'll go to someone else, there's as much fish in the sea as you take up. So and it's very, it's very comfortable to shift these things to, you know, something like what you call Oklahoma or wherever and then take the business forward. So I think we need to deal with, you know, the BPMs a little better, government has to ensure BPMs function fully, you have to organize transport, you have to give them security, many of them work across various time zones in the globe. So you have to provide security for them to go home, come to work, etc. I think, you know, if government is business focused as the state governments must be, this is the job of a state government, you know, to understand and translate it into actual delivery for the companies, this has to be done. And I mean, because I see a huge, see, every challenge has an opportunity. In these challenging times, a sector that will take off quite well for India will be the IT sector because we were discussing earlier with Mr. Sivaraman, 6 trillion is being pumped into the economy of the US. I see a lot of it going to the pharma sector, the health sciences and life, health care and life sciences sector is going to benefit hugely. And this is where, you know, Indian IT companies are going to benefit in terms of actual contracts. So I think, you know, we need to focus on doing this. Two sectors government must focus immediately, auto sector because that is where the manufacturing provides the maximum jobs, the IT sector which provides for a huge amount of jobs and the third is agriculture. Agriculture, you must ensure that farm to fork, everything is taken care of. People must reach farms, sow seeds or reed. It must come through the supply chain, cold storage, warehousing, logistics, everything till it reaches the Monday and then to beyond that to the local Kirana for sale. I think, you know, you, this is a huge thing that we need to think through and there is nothing like a partial lifting in the agriculture sector. You produce, if it doesn't move, you are in trouble. Likewise, in the IT sector, if your IT company is where the ITES and BPM doesn't work, it doesn't solve the problem. If the Hyundai factory works but this component supplier who is in Ambatur or, you know, wherever, he doesn't feed, you are in trouble. So I think, you know, you need to, this is the job of a state government to interpret, IT means what it includes ITES, BPM. Auto sector means what it includes the manufacturing of the components also. I think this is a whole chain of thing and that is a responsibility of the state government to interpret and get it done.
Now, Mr. Sundar Raman, the very well-known chartered accountant and Chennai Citizens Forum, we, his forum had conducted a survey, a survey among knowledgeable citizens. Mr. Sundar Raman, can you, can you detail us what is the findings of the survey generally?
Yeah, I will just take you through the responses which was initially received, but the survey was hosted today morning. There was a response received from some 500 business community people. So the first question was, we wanted to know the initial cue response from them, are they okay with the relaxation of the lockdown? So around 67.6% of the people, they say that yeah, it can be relaxed by following the guidelines. So that is a good thing to know. And the second question which we have placed is, it is suggested that the manufacturing unit should work with reduced workforce to maintain social or physical distancing. In your opinion, what should be the basis to decide such reduced workforce was another question because there are, there are concerns where we have, we have come across where 500 people work in a very close environment. So in that case, the MHA guideline saying that 20% of the total workforce may be allowed to work or 30% of the total workforce allowed to work may not be still be a viable option. So maybe the distancing or working area per employee should be the basis for the implementation of the guidelines. So as rightly, we found out that 52.2% of the people say that the working area per employee should be the basis for implementation of the guideline and percentage on the base of the percentage of number of employees, 30.8% of the people they have said should be on that basis. And many others have different ideas altogether and they have given that as a general feedback.
At this point, I would like to ask Mr. Ragavan, is it possible for the government and the law enforcing agencies to enforce, to implement this sectarian, this selected, this, you know, certain, certain parts allowed to function, certain parts not allowed to function? Is it possible, sir?
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for asking me to join this absorbing discussion. Yes, all of us have been deeply involved in how the government, we are watching the government perform in these difficult times. First, I must pay my, pay my compliment to government and to the police in particular. I never thought the police would rise to occasion so well as they've done. Of course, there have been instances of some excesses here and there, but the sheer magnitude of the operations, that was, I don't know whether I would have done half as well as the police are doing now. And their, their, their job has become very skilled one unlike their, yes, they have occasionally using some force here and there to enforce the guidelines. But they are not, I think it's a great learning process for the police for the future. But it's not as if just they handle this situation now and once the coronavirus, the career is over, they can relax because this is a good learning for the future and they have to be trained. First of all, I've always, I'd always believed that the police force is too large for us to manage, but have to eat a number fine. I think we need more and more policemen because they're not going to perform conventional chores. They're going to handle situations like coronavirus, but I'm told by certain authorities that such pandemic could become the order of the day in the future. So how is the police going to prepare itself? So this is a big question which arises and all of us will have to give some thought, especially police leadership. Now, as for your question, how are they going to ensure this sectorization of relaxation? It's again a very difficult task, it's, it requires a lot of skill and patience. This is where police leadership comes in. Fortunately, we have some excellent leaders, I can speak for the DGP in Tamil Nadu and to the County of Police and the those officers in the district, they have, they've, they've immersed themselves heart and soul into the process. And whether the basic task is to ensure that your instructions, your guidelines percolate down to the last person. Because even after issuing guidelines, you relax, trucks are to be allowed, electricians are to be allowed and all that, ultimately, you're not very sure whether this goes down to the level of the customer. So communication is going to become very, very vital and the police will have to rethink how they're going to communicate. Fortunately, the police force become, even at the lowest level, become technologically set, everybody uses a cellphone, everybody understands WhatsApp and probably now Zoom also, they understand. Whether now they have to, police phones, police forces will have to bring a certain objectivity to ensuring that this happens. Of course, they look up to their secretaries for guidance, whether the order is, it's a question of proportions, it's a question of proportions, it's a question of skill and the question of availability of manpower and how you're going to look after the police force. I mean, there's a limit up to which the police can work. They could just buckle down under sheer pressure, like, like many health workers, you ever, you see instances all over the world of nursing staff just cracking down. Some of them have lost their lives because there's a limit up to which nurses have done excellent work, but at a point in time, they themselves give up because the sheer pressure, the sheer volume of work and the hazards they face. Same thing will probably extend to police, especially in the handling of this migrant, migrant labor. We have seen it vividly in our TV, how, what a difficult task it was, using mere force is not going to help. They're like a human being, they keep coming and so this is going to be difficult, police going to fall for it, but not enforcing this entitlement zones as efficiently as the government likes them to. So I think it's a very difficult, dicey situation. I don't guarantee that this will work all that well, but still we'll make a lot depends on leadership and maintaining the morale of police force because we are not giving, like the health for health service, nurses and doctors are working, many of them have lost their lives all over the world. Same thing could happen to the police, how are you going to sustain their morale? This is going to be a key question.
In fact, they are supposed to be working more than eight hours a day and recently, the DGP issued a circular to his force to be very, you know, careful on how they deal with the public, to be humane, not to be harsh on them. That, that statement was taken very well by the people, in fact, that was reflected in the media too. But there are, there's also a segment called home guards. I'm told that state of affairs there, they're not being paid, that they were, they are made to work for 20 days, 30 days, they are paid for three days, four days and very harshly treated, not even a mask is given to them. Home guards is a very important component in a situation like this, don't you think so, Mr. Ragavan?
Yeah, in my times, of course, that was the service 20 years ago, the home guards were an important constituent in our law and order missionary, they're doing fairly well, but then things have changed so much in the past 15, 20 years that home guards will not be equal to the, to the rigors of modern lawyer. At a point in time, then, numbers are smaller and the citizenry was much more cooperative, more responsive. And now the dimensions are so mind-boggling, especially this experience regarding virus, coronavirus. So I don't think the home guards will be equal to the task of blending experience, patience and a certain kind of rigor. So I think, I would personally, I may be talking through my hat, I will keep the home guards out, they may, they may need some They may, they may need some assistance, but to count on them to assist the police is a fine.
But should the police be given some extra protective gear?
Yeah.
Apart from just a mask?
Definitely, they need extra. Even earlier, even before the coronavirus, we, there, there was a, there was a school of thought that the, the traffic constable, for instance, was being exposed to too much of nauseous vapor and they needed very effective face gear. This is, I can recognize, partially considered, but many of the traffic policemen still operating without the, this mask. So, now the time has come to assess the rigors of police work, what exactly equipment we, we should give as a matter of routine, not as a matter of grace, a matter of routine, how, what exactly we should give them to handle such situations. That is meant by, I may be specificistic, I heard some experts say that there is no cut-off date when, why the virus will disappear.
Yes.
It will keep on coming.
Yes.
It's nothing that we have done, if we go back to, we completely lift the lockdown, then they will have to, it should not give us a false sense of comfort.
Yes.
The police will have to do a lot of thinking, there has to be a blueprint, an, an implementable blueprint, a practical blueprint which will provide for all contingencies which the police force, police will face in the future. There are some excellent bright leaders and there should be a think tank for this. The current officer, I don't want people who are out, out of context, people who are retired, served years. People are currently in the force, they have faced the fury of coronavirus and the public response to it, the kind of, the kind of skill we had to bring to contain it. So, we need a plan of action, we can't just muddle, I think just now, there's a lot of muddling along. In spite of it, the police gave a good account of themselves, but it was a very good plan.
Yes.
I think we, the police will have to do it.
Yes, yes.
It, it pays a lot of money, a lot of money, we'll have to be more money to spend to the police, we can't fill it in.
Yes, you are, you're talking of a plan of action and that needs a lot of money for implementing. Shivaram, Mr. Shivaraman, how do you, how will you find a lot of money and how will you have a kind of a think tank, how do you formulate that?
Before I come to the money, I want to make a few points. Number one, what is the order that the Government of India has passed under the National Disaster Management Act? We have to get it only from the Google. Not a single publication has made a public, public the order that has been passed for the lockdown. Mr. Ragavan knows very well as a police commissioner and I know very well as I have used our one forty-four section, that we publicize the order. When we impose, hundred forty-four can be used on several, several things. Normally, it is used for preventing from people assembling for more than, more than four people. We public, I said, we, we inform through megaphones in every street where we are going to impose the section one forty-four. Now, take for example Chennai, where is the order? I buy four newspapers, the newspapers are not publish the order of the commissioner of police of Chennai. I have written to the commissioner of police, Vishnath and I know him very well, where is your order? Where is the government of Tamil Nadu order? People do not know what is the content of the order itself. So, this has not been given publicity in any newspaper of India. First, there has been a failure on that front. Therefore, if anybody is arrested, in the, suppose somebody is wandering around and the policeman takes it, he will say, I don't know the order, where is the order? I have not seen the order. There is, it's only through word of mouth or through the media that people know that there is a lockdown. I have not seen a single proclamation.
Don't you think that there is enough of publicity on that?
No, that is not sufficient because for, for instance, suppose you go to a court of law, then you have to dig it out of the Google and say, yes, here is the law. Mr. Ragavan knows very well, he has been commissioner of police, when we pass an order, we make an announcement, we publish in the paper. I hear so and so, so and so, here my orders under section one forty, given the powers vested in me, you know, that, you know, that's a besides the point. Now, as far as the police is concerned, because I've, I've also been closely working with the police during my district days and other periods also whenever I was revenue secretary. The point is, how much can you put on the police? Then you ask them to supervise whether the order of opening up the industries have been done properly or not, no, they can't do it. There are certain areas where the police just cannot discharge those responsibilities. It has to be given to the head of the organization himself. If it is Mr. Bhargava's chairman or Maruti or if it is somebody else's chair, Anand Mahindra is chairman or Mahindra, then it must be his responsibility to ensure that he carries out the government orders properly, not the police. The police have given certain responsibilities to bring about public order in, in the public. They cannot be responsible for enforcing these orders or enforcing these orders. So, there must be a clear-cut divided responsibility of the different authorities. The district magistrate has got certain authorities, now for instance, district magistrate can certainly take to task any industry which violates the order. But the police cannot go and do this, the police have got emptying other duties. Therefore, one thing which has to be made very clear is, now it is a jumble. Although there are clear-cut responsibilities laid down, people should know what is their responsibility and which area they are responsible for. And as Mr. Ragavan rightly pointed out, a human being cannot work for more than ten hours and continuously, certainly for ten, for seven days, eight days, he just cannot work. The number of policemen have to be increased, they have to be trained, if you are using home guards, they have to be paid. Home guards have to be paid when they are on duty, there is an allowance prescribed by the government, they are given free food also, they are given uniform, they are given also basic training. Unless this is done, how can you use the home guards? So, these are all things which the government will have to think very carefully. So, you asked me about where to find the resources. Now, if somebody wants to find the resources, he can go through the entire budget and easily find out the resources. It is not at all difficult to find resources. There are emptying areas where you can cut out expenditure, people can be asked to curtail expenditure, people, officers spend money lavishly on their cars. Now, take for example, one state government, I don't want to name the state government, where secretaries of government and deputy secretaries of government travel in cars, which I as secretary or Mr. Ragavan as commissioner of police would have never dreamt of even getting into it. There are people who are using those cars, people are spending twenty-five lakhs and thirty lakhs in buying cars for high court judges and chief secretary. There are many such areas where you can control expenditure. In fact, when I joined as finance secretary in Madhya Pradesh, the task before me was how to save the state from bankruptcy. The state was bankrupt and I found within one month, I was able to make the state have a surplus of money by simply reordering the expenditure and simply curtaining wasteful expenditure. There are many, many areas where government money must be due, people are not simply paying the dues, so those dues can be collected. If somebody can sit down and work it out very easily, it can be done. It's not that it cannot be done, Government of India itself will be able to find out fifty thousand crores at least in their budget which can be saved for using for some of these.
Mr. Shivaraman, I'm, I'm sure and I hope that this government, particularly our state government will use the expertise and ideas of people like you and, and get an expert panel together. And before I move to Mr. K T Ragavan, the senior standing council, on a very important issue of that, that had been, that, that has been raised, raised by people like you also, Mr. Shivaraman, on the enforcement and on, you know, even, even the one forty-four. If I'm arrested, where is the order? I mean, how does a magistrate look at it? In fact, magistrates are not working now and K T Ragavan perhaps will contemplate on this that the lower courts, not just the lower courts, even the high court, the judiciary is not working. So, does it create a problem for the common man? Particularly when rules are not specified, when proclamations are not notified. Only there is one fear of death from Corona that is ruling at the moment to discipline the people. Now, before I go to K T Ragavan, I would like to talk to Dr. Suresh, the senior microbiologist because I pulled him out of an OP to be on the panel, I do not want to delay his work and, you know, inconvenience his patients. Dr. Suresh, what do you think of the situation now? Every day, they are saying new cases, deaths and how do you look at this as a microbiologist?
Yes, sir, sir, as Mr. Shivaraman said, he said about regarding the screening, there is no validated screening test for COVID nineteen. So, as I have said before starting the industries, all the employees should be, get the fitness certificate from the department of public health that they don't have any contact with the COVID patients and they are not staying in the hot zone areas. So, before permitting them to work, they should get a certificate from the department of public health in coordination with the local police. So, that will help you to prevent the spread further. And another thing I want to bring you to the notice is, we all speak of only the eradications, we also should think of the emergence of the infection. Those who are getting recovered, they can even shed the viruses for another four to five weeks in the fickers. So, those recovered patients should also be home quarantined for another four to five weeks to prevent the re-emergence of infection.
How, how long quarantine, four to five weeks?
Yeah, four to five weeks because fifty percent of the COVID patients, those who recover from the respiratory symptoms may shed coronavirus in the fickers for another four to five weeks. So, they should also be home quarantined even after the recovery for another four weeks. And one more thing, and one more thing I want to bring you to notice is, we should also screen all the healthcare providers because so far there is no proper guidelines to screen the healthcare providers, they are all about exposed. So, they should also be screened, they all should be screened before getting back into work. So, all these three will prevent the re-emergence of infections and further spread.
Even, even when we talk about the virus and a vaccine, I'm told that, that to develop a vaccine, it will take at least one and a half to two years.
So, that is to be considered because starting the industries, definitely they all should be screened as like Mr. Shivaraman said, for permitting, permitting them to work because we do have the related test, they should have at least the medical certificate clearance from the department of public health because only they have the list of contacts, list of the person infected, everything, travel history, everything. So, in coordination with the police, everybody, those who are permitted to work should have that clearance certificate.
Do you agree that there should be more of screening to be done?
Sir, as I've already told you, there is no screening test particularly, there is no validated test for screening. In the airport, they were screening only for temperature, that's why we have missed a lot of cases. So, that some, if in some cases, there may be a temperature, in some cases, they may not have temperature also.
Does it mean that we are in a very hopeless situation and best is to stay at home?
No, see, in another three weeks, we'll come to know whether there is a decreasing trend or not. Definitely, there will be a decreasing trend because we see only the cases of contacts. There is no new emergence cases and as far as Tamil Nadu is concerned, the community spread is very, very meagre, even below three percent. Only either the travel history or the conference or Nizamuddin conference, only these are all correlated with that. So, nearly ninety-five percent of the cases have arisen from that. So, community spread is still, before starting the big scale industries and this thing, we should have a screening, we should get the fitness certificate before permitting them to work and still we should maintain the social distancing. Should, social distance should be maintained and schools and malls and this thing, this should be delayed till June fifteenth, another six weeks before permitting, permitting them to work.
So, as Dr. Suresh says, even the relaxation of the critical areas like MSMEs or whatever, IT, anything, anything should be done in a very careful manner, otherwise this new cases, there will be a spike. Mr. Ragavan, how do you look at the situation from a lawyer's perspective? And also, you are a public person, you are also the leader of a, of a major political party that is the ruling, that is ruling India now, you're BJP leader as well. How do you look at it from a public perception, from a public man as well as a leader, a, a, a leading standing council?
So, what I feel is already Government of India and state governments, they identified these hotspots. All the hotspots are in fact couroned of right now. Nobody will be allowed to come out from these identified hotspots. So, and as Dr. rightly said, it has not spread, the community spread has not happened. The managers or leadership of the industry to take care of, to follow those guidelines. And according to government, around three hundred and fifty districts is not affected with this Corona COVID nineteen. So, majority of districts are safe in India right now. So, I think, but see, Mr. Shivaraman said, the one forty-four orders were not published in a newspaper or government has not come out with full details. I think the, the communication, a lot of changes in communication system. Now, government issues an order, I received it in my WhatsApp within five minutes, everyone knows that. So, the traditional method need not be followed. You have, earlier, we had only one durdesh, now we have many channels, channels are coming out with these details and we have Twitter handles, social media handles are there, they came out with this government's order. So, I think that need not be, we cannot raise a big question on that. And as far as this lifting, partial lifting, I think the government has consulted many people, all experts were consulted. In fact, we too had some this type of Zoom meeting earlier and we presented our views to the government. So, after considering every, every, I, I think consulting everyone and considering all the facts, government has come out with this partial lockdown. But of course, it's, it's difficult to enforce, the law, the police force will find it difficult. But everyone, we need to take precautions because we not wait for government's order, I think, for, for police order. We on our own take precautions, but government has no option also because we have a lot of this unorganized workers. They started in fact, a couple of days ago, we have seen in Bombay also, started their agitation. So, we need to consider everything and I hope the orders of our guidelines of the government will be strictly adhered to by the stakeholders.
And what about the justice delivery system?
Justice deliveries are already from May first to thirty-first, all the courts will be on holiday. Already several lakhs cases are pending, in fact, I argued a case, yeah, two cases, yeah, a year ago, but still the judgment not delivered, what to do?
Yes.
Already we have such cases, nothing will happen.
Good, which means now the, the common man, common man.
Some like it that way, I said.
Yes. So, now from what Dr. Suresh said, it seems, we seem to be in a very hopeless situation where there is no proper testing available. And now we are going to relax the, the, the lockdown and yes, sir. You wanted to say something, sir?
May I come in now?
Mr. Ganapati, yeah, you, you have a point.
Yeah, see, coming back to what I am familiar with, you know, businesses run for profits, not for charity. But then businesses today in a flat world are linked to the, in a, in a globally interconnected world, businesses also depend on what is happening around. If you really look at it, America got into it from a historical high, I think there's no argument on that. The, India got into it from a very difficult standpoint. Our economy was under stress when we got into this. But the one factor, and I'm sure Mr. Shivaraman can add value to what I'm saying, we don't know when China gone to enter it, we don't know when China gotten out of it. But I think, you know, it's fair to presume that the world order is undergoing some challenge and transformation. America may, will, may still come out as G one, but we don't know how far behind or how far close China is going to be to that. And I think linked to that and the apparent stress in Europe. In fact, one European client of mine told me that either coronavirus will kill Europe or Europe will kill coronavirus. So, now it was so bad. So, we don't know the quality of recovery from Europe. I think the, if the world order changes because of all these things, I think India can come under stress. But again, India can have, view this as an opportunity and try and get into the global supply chain a whole lot better. To me, I think the slogan for India in the coming days, if not coming years, should be assemble in India. I think that is our strength, services has always been our forte, services has always been our strength. More than anything else, I think assemble in India will catapult us to the next tranche of growth and make India a very dominant economic power coupled as we are with the front and center position, full position that we have in the IT services. I think if we can get into that layer of assemble in India, I think India's fortunes can change arising out of this challenge. That's why I have always felt that both internally and externally, challenge is an opportunity. Thank you.
Very, very well said, Mr. Ganapati. Before I ask Mr. Shivaraman to add to that, I have a word of caution as a, as a journalist. We turn east and we have seen China bring back normalcy, business and jobs and all that, six months after the first Corona case came out, November, December, November. Six months, they were shut down, almost shut down. And then you turn west, you see America collapsing. There are questions being raised whether America will continue to be the number one, the superpower, whether it will be the leader of world economy, whether dollar will be really where it is today. So between the two, we have pointers to take. Yes, you are a businessman, but you should also talk about the fatalities. It's the hopelessness, it's not like I have a fever and I can be treated. Right now, the people who have said they have been treated, they have been cured. In fact, Dr. Suresh has been saying they can get it back and get it back more reluctantly. So you need to be really, really careful on handling the relaxation.
We don't know what herd immunity is actually, we still don't know what herd immunity is, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Sivaraman, any, any thoughts on that? What Mr. Ganapati talked about, the world order and Indian opportunities there?
Before I come to the world order, I want to bring to your notice as well as to notice a Mr. Ragavan. There is a National Migrant Labour Employment Act nineteen seventy-nine, passed by the Indian Parliament, under which any organization employing more than five persons who are migrant workers must register themselves with the state government migrant labor authority whom server is designated and must get a license. So I am simply wonderstruck as to why this mess was created about migrant labor. Because if you look at the site of the government at Tamil Nadu, there is a designated officer for registering the migrant workers as well as giving them licenses. If you look at the site of the Kerala government, they have also passed an order by which migrant workers are insured. They are given health facilities, health insurance, employment insurance, everything is there. What happened to all these things? I have not seen a single news item focusing on this point, excepting in one newspaper, one trade union raised this point, what happened to the National Migrant Workers Employment Act of nineteen seventy-nine? Why the state governments are not implemented it properly? There is a Chief Commissioner Labor in Government of India and the Labor Ministry. In this digital age, he would have had at his fingertips. How many states have got migrant workers, how many migrant workers, from which states, from where they belong to, how they should have been organized, et cetera. Why this factor was completely ignored, I'm not able to understand it. This is something which passes my comprehension, because Government of India Chief Labor Commissioner is a very senior officer. And the state government also appointed joint commissioners of labor to register the migrant workers, to get all details on the, on the migrant workers. So every state government should be having the list of migrant workers, where they are located, which companies are working on them. Therefore, this problem which is created, this mess could have been easily avoided. Now that's, of course, that's one point. Now regarding the world order, I am not so optimistic as Mr. Ganapati regarding the world order that is going to emerge. The world order that is going to emerge is not going to be as globalized as it is now or as it was before the pandemic. Because people have seen now, China has been trying to put itself in a position of dominance as far as the supply of medicines are concerned, supply of equipment are concerned. This is not going to happen anymore. People have started already working, take our own country. Government of India set up a committee of pharmaceutical companies as well as the Government of India ministries. And now they have decided to give three ten thousand crore subsidy for setting up the A P I units in India. They said every state government will be given thousand crore subsidy if they are able to find a park where this A P S can be set up. That is the basic chemicals for the pharmaceutical company, they are working very hard on it. Therefore, there is not going to be the kind of supply chain which we have been accustomed to in the last ten years, when China became the dominant factor as far as supply is concerned. So every country is going to find out, examine what are the important things which they have to make within their own country so that they don't become dependent on others. Take for example ventilators. Now ventilators, Mahindra is making, Maruti is making, everyone has started making it. Therefore, it's not going to be that after this period is over, every country will try to become self-sustaining as far as important drugs, as far as important medical equipment are concerned, because they would not like to depend on somebody else, because they may jack up the prices, they may supply poor quality equipment, come very responsible for answering this. Second point, so far we have been thinking of capitalism, freedom of enterprise, promotion of private sector, et cetera. Every time a crisis took place, it is the government which stepped in to prevent the crisis from happening, helping the private sector. So the role of the government, whether it is democracy or a capitalistic society, extreme democracy like in the United States, government is going to play a more and more dominant role in the coming years. Because without that, economists will not be able to sustain themselves properly. Private sector will be allowed to function properly, but government will certainly be in the picture, because now the government is in the picture, private sector has not been able to do anything about the pandemic, excepting trying to do research and supply equipment, even that, we have not been able to supply adequately as far as our own state is concerned. So this supply chain, which has been a dominant feature of the interdependent world, is going to be broken in the coming years and the world order is going to change. Politically also, the world order will be changing, because now you see that the European countries will also be looking into what has happened within the system. They have lost thousands of people, their entire economy shattered, Italy is not going to rise, it is going to become a third world country. France may become a third world country, Spain may become a third world country. They are going to look at themselves, what has happened to us? Why have we become like this? So the world, and I don't think China is going to be anywhere in the picture. Today you have seen the newspaper, the, whether it is true or false, United States has announced China has exploded a nuclear device underground with zero emission. And they are questioning China, why did you do it? You are a member of the C T B T, why have you done it? These are all precursors as to what is going to happen in the coming months after this coronavirus impact is over. We are going to see a complete change in the world order of things.
Well, it looks like at the end of the session, or I think we have come to the end of the session, unless some, any panelist has additional points to make. It looks like a very dismal situation and a lot of caution is required, is needed to be made, is needed, required from the government and lot of responsibility from the citizen. If he should see his next generation come up before his eyes. Thank you very much, all the panelists, and have safe days, life ahead of you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ragavan.